May the 2nd, 2023, Bolin County Commission Meeting. And at this time, we have invitation will be by Joe Aldrea from the Foley Calvary Chapel Fellowship Church, and followed by the pledge from Sheriff House Mac.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you, for, Lord, for all the blessings, Lord, that you pour out upon our lives. Lord, I thank you for the county in which we live in. Lord, I thank you, Lord, for our commissioners, God. Father, the decisions and the things that they have to do today, Lord, and for our county and for the people of this county, God, I ask for your abundant blessing to be upon them. Guide them, give them wisdom, direction, God, as it affects all of us, God. I thank you so much, Lord, that your hand is upon us. And we ask, Lord, that you would continue to have your hand upon us, Lord, and as a sign there above the commissioners, Lord, and God, we trust, Lord, we will trust you, Lord, and all that goes on. So, thank you for our families, and thank you for all the blessings, and bless this meeting today. And in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all. Okay, first on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes from the April 16th, 2023 regular meeting.
So move.
Take it.
A motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next is the payment of the bills. Commissioner Underwood?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay the bills as listed in the council's payable.
Second.
Okay, got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood to pay the bills. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay, second by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next is the notification of interim payments approved by Kurt Trusscher as allowed under policy 8.1, and that's just for the record. Okay, next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt our consent agenda with notation that item C and 3 is to be voted on separately.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, I got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of CN3, which will be voted on separately. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it. Commissioners, CN2. Do I hear a motion now?
Mr. Chairman.
That's part of the consent, isn't it? CN2? CN3?
Excuse me, CN3.
No problem. You tricked me there.
Looking at it, but just not. So do I hear a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-105?
I make a motion that we approve resolution 2023-105.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner McKenzie.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Right. Next is the presentations.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First up in presentations, we have item DA1, which is a proclamation, older Americans' month, May 2023. Ms. Kelly Childress will do the presentation.
Yes, representative.
And I will read the proclamation.
Oh, folks.
Proclaiming May 2023 as Older Americans' Month in Bolin County, Alabama. Whereas, the Bolin County Commission joins in the national recognition of the month of May 2023 as Older Americans' Month with the theme of Aging Unbound. And whereas, Bolin County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, Bolin County recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults who may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas, Bolin County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Bolin County Commission in regular session assembled, that with deepest respect and admiration, we hereby proclaim May 2023 Older Americans' Month in Bolin County, Alabama. And we urge everyone to take time in May to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and citizens who care for them. Be it further proclaimed that May 18th, 2023, is hereby set aside as Older Americans' Day in Bolin County, Alabama.
I'll try to keep this as short as I can. As you know, every year we do Older Americans' Month, and I always try to find an individual or group that is so deserving of this proclamation. And this year, we chose the Little River Sale Center. Sue Ferguson is our center manager, and Carolyn Biddle is her assistant. As you know, next month will be one year that that sale center has been opened. And Commissioner Gruber, how long have you fought for this center? I mean, it's been years, and Barbara Stockdale was a big advocate. I know she's looking down through heaven on us and thanking God for what all of you commissioners have done. The sale center, and I'll read you a little excerpt from this year. It says, um, hold on, I'll get it. Everyone has a role to play in combating ageism, and how we all benefit when older individuals remain engaged, independent, and included in their communities. Little River, their community came together. It cannot run. The county commissioners can build a facility, but it takes the community to come together and make that facility what it is. And because of the two great leaders we have at the facility, that sales center is doing wonderful. So I'm so tickled to have Sue and Ms. Carolyn accept this proclamation for Older America's Month.
I want to say thank y'all very much for the job you've done, and thank you for the proclamation.
Come on, Ms. Carolyn. Come on.
I just want to thank, you know, like, many years I've been praying to have something to do down there before I live it, because I've been driving 32 miles to 33 miles to Burke every day. And also, I thank the Lord that he opened it up, that I got the job I wanted, and I'm.
I just want to thank all the seniors here today. You know, it takes a while to get to a rap. You know, we have a lot of trials and tributes that we have to go through through our life, but it's very rewarding to be able to call and consider yourself a senior citizen. It's been a very good experience for me, and I just want to congratulate every other senior citizen in Bolin County, claiming May as Older American Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we proclaim May as Older American Month?
Amen.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Would anybody want to say anything?
Yeah, I would just thank y'all for what you do. It was exciting to get that center up and running in Little River, as well as Locksley. The two new centers are a great asset to this community. If y'all ever are down in any of these areas, go visit the centers and see what top-notch facilities they are. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, our own in-house staff put all that stuff together as well, so kept the cost of the centers down, and they're just amazing to go up there. And if you want to take a tour and see where Little River's at, then go on up there. And you can find a whole nother part of Bolin County that you've never seen before. So, thank y'all again for what you do, and thank you for all your hard work to keep that center running, and the passion that you have to make it fun for the seniors in that area. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you also. Kelly, you did an excellent job explaining. I haven't been to these centers yet, so I need to get out there and get involved more. So, I apologize for that. So, I'm not old enough, but anyway.
There he is.
But if you haven't been to Little River, you need to go, because it's a special place up there.
Oh, I can't even begin to tell you how excited I am whenever I realized that we were, didn't have some of these facilities out there. I know, Ms. Gruber's been working on it a long time, but man, I really started pushing too. And so, it took all of us to make this happen. But I've told this to Kelly, I hope that we get more of these out in the unincorporated areas, so that the seniors have a place that they can go, and they can feel comfortable with where they are. I know with the recent loss of my mom, but, you know, it brings back memories to me whenever I used to take her to the Somerdale Sales Center, which I think has been in operation consistently for more than 40 years. There's only a few that are operated by municipalities, and then we've got these that the county oversees. They're all through the, you know, the SARPSE sort of, all that senior assisted independent living. But it gives them exactly what that is. You feel comfortable amongst your peers and stuff. And so, the Locksley Center is great as well. One of the guys from the county, along with Taylor, did a jigsaw puzzle of the, when we cut the ribbon up there, and I couldn't stand it. I had to have one for myself. And actually, I ordered one from Shutterfly, and I got a notification that it's going to be delivered today. I didn't realize it was going to be 1,000 pieces, so I might have to put that thing together. And I want to have it hanging on my wall in my commission office. There's a perfect spot left there with nothing on it, and I didn't know what more we were going to put on that wall. But I don't know when I'm going to have time to put that jigsaw puzzle together, but maybe somebody will help me. But somehow or another, I'm going to get it put together. I'm going to get it framed up. However you do jigsaw puzzles, I've never put one on the wall. I've already put them together, put them back in a box, and give them to the goodwill, and put all pieces are here, you know. But I'm so excited about this, because it means a lot to me. My in-laws used to go to a sales center. They're no longer able to get out and about. So, while you can, get it while you can, and then that's what we really have to do. And so, I look forward to, hopefully, the days when I'll be able to participate in the sales centers, because at least I know more about it. I try to tell more people about it, so that they'll understand that, hey, it ain't about the cost of the meal, or maybe how good or bad it tastes. It's about the getting together and having a sense of purpose and things that you get to do. So, thank you, ladies. Yes, Little River's a long ways up there. And last time I've been there was when I came to y'all's ribbon cutting. So, but nonetheless, thank you, Kelly. You guys, we get like, you know, compliments about apartments. I think Kelly gets the most. And so, that's because she does such a great job, and she's so compassionate about what she does. And I think the more people need to know more about what the Council on Aging does, and how they can help people. It's not just for people with limited income. Anybody that is getting to the point where that they're going to be on Medicare, and they've got to make these options. You know, just being in your 50s, you get bombarded by AARP. Can't tell you how many of those membership cards I've chunked into garbage. My sister told me, why don't you join that? And I'm like, I don't want to yet. And she said, there's a lot of good things in that. So, I don't know, maybe I'll send them my, whatever, money and join. But thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Again, thank y'all so very much, you know, for all that seniors do. I mean, there's a lot. I mean, there's still a lot of very active seniors in our community. And I know, going back several years, when Ms. Barbara Stockdale first came to the commission and asked for us to help them with getting a sales center in Little River. They were meeting in a church, which, and it was okay, but it just was, it's still, it needed a lot of work. And so, we tried for years and years and years, and finally, this commission got together and said, all right, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and do it. And we got both of them at the same time. We did Little River, and we'd also did the Locksley. And it has really helped those communities. And I was worried the rest of Ms. Stockdale left, golly, who's going to fill her shoes, you know. But thank y'all. You know, y'all have stepped forward, and you know, Barbara would be down, looking down at y'all and praising y'all, because, you know, that was her heart thrive right there, until the day that she passed away. You know, that was what she wanted to see happen. I mean, she was that adamant about her sales center. So, again, thank y'all, and you know, that's it. Thank you. Okay, we've got the motion that we've seconded, and all in favor signify.
We are. Okay. All right, next?
Next, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is a proclamation regarding National Correctional Officers Week, May 7th through the 13th, 2023. Sheriff Mac, Commissioner Ball. Proclaiming May 7th through the 13th, 2023, as National Correctional Officers Week in Bolin County, Alabama. Whereas, on May 5th, 1984, Ronald Reagan, the 40th President of the United States, delivered a proclamation designating the first week in May as National Correction Officers Week. And whereas, the staff members who serve in the position of correctional officers, excuse me, whether civilian or security staff, are essential to the day-to-day operations of the Bolin County Sheriff's Office Corrections Center. And whereas, the United States Congress has recognized the essential services provided by all correctional officers in the United States of America. And whereas, the Bolin County Sheriff's Office employs approximately 140 correctional officers. And whereas, the Bolin County Sheriff's Office Correctional Officers oversee the safety and security of approximately 600 inmates on a daily basis. And whereas, the Bolin County Sheriff's Office Corrections Center processes approximately 13,000 inmates being booked in or booked out of the Bolin County Sheriff's Office Corrections Center on an annual basis. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Bolin County Commission in regular session assembled, that the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2023, is hereby designated as National Corrections Officers Week in Bolin County, Alabama.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commission. Appreciate the recognition for all these men and women that work across the street in your Bolin County Sheriff's Corrections Center. As Ron said, average daily population of just a little under 600 a day, 13,000 to 15,000 transactions with inmates over each year. And of course, 15,000 transactions with inmates over each year. And of course, now we're building the new facility. And things are going well with that, as we continue to address the need. Corrections officers are a very unique part of law enforcement, because they're one of those parts of law enforcement that really the only people that get to see them are the inmates. But there is no complete criminal justice system without corrections. It is the defining piece, because it does not end at the time of an arrest, or at the time that a crime is solved. It only ends when that case is adjudicated for the victims and for the public, so that they know that the law enforcement process is complete. And taking care of those inmates over there can be a challenge. As we tell our new graduates, a lot of times you're working with people that you care more for them than what they care for you. And it does put you in a unique circumstance. But they are to be applauded for their work. I have Major Arthur with me today, the Commander of Corrections, Captain Graves, working over in our correction center, and Captain Lusk. And they do an outstanding job in managing the day-to-day operations of the correction center, and we just so much appreciate this proclamation.
Okay, do I hear a motion to declare May the 7th through the 13th as a National Correctional Officers Week in Baldwin County?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, Ball seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion?
I mean, I just would like to say thanks, Sheriff, for all you do, the staff, Major Arthur, everybody involved in corrections. You know, one of the things that I've been saying for a long time is we are definitely facing mental health crisis all over America, especially in our community. And like we said before, the corrections facility is not a house for the mentally ill. And so, we work hard with legislation partnerships, trying to expand our mental health avenues as far as bed, space, and that kind of stuff. And it's going to be real nice to see with the addition of our new correctional facility, that we will have a separate room for those mentally ill patients that can go in, that will not only keep them safe, but keep your officers safe as well, because I know that that is a daily battle. I don't think people grasp the concept of how many fights these correctional officers have to get in every single day. I don't even know how many times a day. But it is a, it's more of a struggle inside there than y'all think. It's not just people in jail, and everybody's fine, and acting's right. They're not. Our guys inside that correctional facility, lives are just exciting, just like our patrol officers on the road. And I just commend y'all for what you do. Thank you for your service in that facility. And, you know, it takes a special person. You know, like Commissioner Underwood always says, it's a calling to do things like that, because it is not a pleasant job at times. And I humbly appreciate all your efforts in the correctional facility.
There's nothing I can add to that. Jeff said exactly what I would say. With my background being in law enforcement, I know what they went, what correctional officers go through, and it's tough. And it takes a special person. And that's why we have a big turnover, and we need to try to recruit and retain them and do better for them, you know, make it better for them. So, thank y'all. My hat's off to y'all.
Hey, ditto, ditto. But I got a little bit more to add. I just want to say that I am so thankful for what you guys do. I can't even imagine what you do. I've watched enough on TV, and I don't know if it's anything like that, but I don't want to know. But I'm thankful for what y'all do. But I'm also thankful for, that we're able to honor our commitment and our support to our law enforcement community, that the commission is able to expand our jail. You know, you don't like to have to do those kind of things, but our population has grown so much, that at least I feel like the percentage of inmates hasn't grown as fast as our population has, because our population is growing really, really, really fast. But I will just, my hat's off to you guys. I say it all the time when you're in the room. I still feel safe in Baldwin County, and you're one of the main reasons I still feel safe in Baldwin County. And you know what? I think that's why people like to come here. For those of us born and raised and been here, our families have been here for generations, we get it. We live here. We born and raised. But because of what you guys do, and knowing that you keep, I know there's people that need to be in jail sometimes for what they do, and I really, really appreciate you guys for being there to help protect us. And also, you know, there's that, that hope of rehabilitation. And also, Pastor Joe was in here earlier. I know he's a chaplain there. Everything that goes on in there, it's amazing. There is, there is success stories. Some people make a mistake, and they're a first-time offender and never make it again. And I really feel like a lot of that has to do with how they're treated by you guys, you know. And I know that, like Sheriff said a while ago, so many times, you care more about that person than they care about you. But maybe if they can get that life-changing and turnaround event happen to them, that not everybody has to be a habitual offender and lost in the system. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you, Sheriff.
I just want to say thank you to the, all the correctional officers that's out there. I've got a grandson that just started in that role with the city of Orange Beach, and it's a challenge, you know. And a young person starting out, it's really a challenge, you know, because a lot goes through their minds, you know, and stuff that they see. And it's a calling, you know. You have to have it in your heart to be able to do it. And I just want to, again, thank each and every one of y'all for what you do, because, you know, you're the only people that a lot of these inmates see, you know. And they depend on us to provide them with the services that they need while they're in this correctional facilities. Again, thank you very much. Okay, do I hear a motion that we proclaim National Law?
We just got to take a vote.
Okay, all right, all right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next?
Next, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is item DA3, National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial Week Recognition Proclamation. Sheriff Mack, and the proclamation will be read by Commissioner McKenzie.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to read this. This is very special to me. Proclaiming May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as a National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas, the President of the United States of America recognizes the second week of May as National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Week. And whereas, law enforcement officers have been killed or died in the line of duty, deserve to be remembered and honored each year. And whereas, the work of all law enforcement officers is essential to preserving peace in our communities, ensuring the safety of precious lives and property. And whereas, the families of those who have suffered the loss of a law enforcement officer are forever recognized and honored for their loss. And whereas, the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office has lost the following deputy sheriffs who were killed in the line of duty. I'm just pausing for a second, y'all. Deputy Abram Johnson, end of watch, December 26, 1881. And Deputy James Stewart, end of watch, April 11th, 1895. And Deputy Howard Dutton, end of watch, October 1st, 1987. And Deputy Scott Ward, end of watch, November 23, 2012. And Deputy Bill Smith, end of watch, June 6, 2021. And whereas, the Law Enforcement Officers Memorial for Baldwin County is located in Robertsdale, Alabama, and has affixed upon the names of all 13 law enforcement officers who have been killed in the line of duty in Baldwin County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that week of May 14th through the 20th, 2023, is hereby designated as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. The Baldwin County Commission and the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office extends its most heartfelt gratitude and eternal appreciation for those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, gone beyond the full measure, and given not only their personal lives, but also have caused hardship upon their families in doing so.
Mr. Chairman and County Commission, thank you for this as well, this recognition. Law Enforcement Memorial Week will actually be the third week in May, but on May the 11th, at 10 o'clock, we will have our dedication ceremony, because unfortunately, this year we will be adding the 14th name to the monument. That was Officer Ivan Lopez of the Mount Vernon Police Department, who was on his way home after working the night, and was killed in a motor vehicle crash in Somerdale, Alabama. So, even though he was not on the force, if you will, in Baldwin County, because his death was in Baldwin County, his name will be placed on that monument, and that will be the 14th name. And so, we would like to invite the public to come out for that ceremony, as we honor those. It is especially important to the men and women of all law enforcement, regardless of the shape of their badge, the color of their uniform, or their duties, that they know that when they have brothers and sisters in law enforcement who pay the ultimate sacrifice, that we continue to remember them. These men and women put their lives on the line every day. And by remembering those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, we also honor those who continue to serve. And I will tell you that the state of law enforcement in Baldwin County is strong. We have built more relationships over the past few years. We work closer together with our brothers in Alea, with our municipal partners, with our federal partners. And one of the reasons that we are as strong in law enforcement is because of the governing bodies that support us, the Baldwin County Commission, the municipalities, all of them in Baldwin County. It's because of that partnership that we have such good law enforcement in Baldwin County, and I personally thank you for that.
All right, do I hear a motion that we proclaim National Law Enforcement Memorial Week and recognition and proclamation for May the 14th, through May the 14th through the 20th?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say one thing, if you don't mind, Commissioner Ball. I didn't mean to go first.
Well, you can go first.
I didn't, we didn't mention, there's a friend of mine. It's hard, so y'all got to bear with me. He's a trooper. He passed away, and his end of watch was February 17th, 2002. He was a mentor to me. He was one of the FTOs when I first got to the Grove Hill Post as a trooper. And he lost his life in a vehicle crash going home. I remember getting the call. I was at home in Baldwin County. I had just transferred from Washington County back to Baldwin County. And I remember getting the call from dispatch saying, Trooper Brian Nichols was in a crash. And I was thinking, oh my God, how severe is it? I wanted to get dressed, get in a patrol car, take off to Washington County on Alabama 56, you know. But I had to work the next day. They had enough people up there. But he, it was, he was going home. He was 10 minutes away from his house, and a horse comes across the road. It was dark. His shift was, I think, a 2:10. It was 9:40 something, and the horse came across. He struck the horse and instantly killed him. I just don't want, like Sheriff said, I don't want to forget the people that lost their lives. He wasn't in Baldwin County, but he was a friend of mine, and he died in Washington County. And he was a mentor to me. I looked up to this gentleman. He was clean-cut, looked good in uniform, and I was just proud to work with this gentleman, and always remember him and his family. I was able to go to Washington, DC, to the National Memorial, to be the representative, Alea, and to go with the family, and to help the family to go through this. It was very tough. If you've never been to Washington, DC, please go. If you ever go to that and watch what they do, and what they do for all the officers and the families, it's amazing. So, I didn't, I just didn't want to forget Brian Nichols, because we do not want to forget our officers in blue. So, thank you.
You know, it's such a moving ceremony that you guys do every year, and I'm thankful that I've been able to attend and learn more about how much you guys support your officers that have fallen. Every day in my life, just about, unless I don't go a mile north of where you turn to go to my house, that's rare, I pass by the spot where Officer Lopez lost his life. And just this past weekend, my husband and I were coming south on Highway 59, and I said, you know, you always got to be ready, because there is no way he could have ever known what hit him. And that was such a tragic accident, and you can't help but think how that, no matter what, you got to be ready. I know this might sound silly to some of y'all. I never even watched Blue Bloods until this past year, because I don't like, watch mainstream TV very much. And that series has been on for many years. So, I've got it on streaming, and I'm kind of watching one just about every night. And I really like that show, and it talks about, you just see how much the officers care so much about, I don't know if it's even realistic, but I just love the way they just protect their own. And they really, 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 really do honor those. And when somebody hurts one of their own, buddy, they're out there. So, I feel like that even though I may not be a law enforcement officer, when they hurt one of our own, I feel the same way. So, thank you guys so much, and thank you for honoring these people. It's, it's, it's very moving, and very touching, and very fitting.
First, the Ball?
Yep. Thank you, Sheriff, again. This is a very heartfelt presentation that we do every year. I mean, you know, I wish the President would proclaim, you know, National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Month. It'd be nice. But we get a week, but we never forget. But we get a week, but we never forget. This types of stuff that we do here, the ceremonies that we'll be doing in Robertsdale in a couple of weeks overshadow the stigma that the public has with law enforcement and make what's important, important. I've been in the court system and working in the court system when two of these people that I know personally have lost their lives in the line of duty. And I think the impact, you see the impact that they had on the community when you go to the funerals and see the outpouring of camaraderie and support, this almost, the way I can compare it, it's just bone chilling to see what is there, how many people's lives they've touched, and how much they're gonna be missed, and still to this day, every single day goes by, they're missed. And, and like Commissioner McKenzie said, and you stated, sometimes end of watches don't just happen in gun battles and stuff like that, it could, it could be any form of transportation vehicle accidents with Deputy Smith, a heroic rescue attempt in waters that took his life. I mean, anytime that they lose their life in the line of duty, we honor this, and it's very special ceremony there in Robertsdale, humbling. Not much talking going on, it's just a surreal experience to be a part of. I'm humbled and proud as a county commissioner that we do get to be a small part of y'all's organization, making sure that you have the best of the best equipment that you have to protect you, your men and women in the line of duty, and, and just making sure that y'all are always protected is a big job that we have up here, and we're always gonna do that for you guys. Thank you again for the service, and just prayers to these families as they have to endure all these dates, every single year that rolls around and every day of their lives, for the selfless service and ultimate sacrifice that was paid by these gentlemen here. So, that's all I've got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. You know, these officers, they gave up their life for a service that they were providing for the citizens of this county. I knew several of them, and, you know, their hearts were in their job, they loved doing what they did. And this is one thing that each and every one of these law enforcement officers that are out there working every day of the week face, you never know what's gonna happen. You may tell your, your family goodbye, and it may be your last goodbye. But, you know, they're dedicated to what they do. And, you know, the, there's a stigma out there right now, you know, with, with, about the law enforcement, you know, and, you know, ah, you know, I don't know what's happened, but, you know, they're not out there to harass people, hurt people, you know, they're out there to, to help provide a helping hand in a crisis that they had nothing to do with begin with. But they responded, they got the call, and they made the ultimate sacrifice. So, you know, their, their families are the ones that are suffering now, so. With that being said, do I hear a motion that we proclaim?
We got, we just need to take a vote.
I know, it gets confusing all that discussion.
I've got a motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Ball.
Me.
Oh, you did?
I think it was me, yeah.
All in favor, every single probably saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to stand up and give another round of applause to these guys.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, the next one, the next commission will be for Emergency Medical Services Week.
Last but not least. Oops. Yeah, I'm tearing it up. Get it back in here, right? Okay, thank goodness they put this in large print for me, so I didn't have to bring those reading glasses out. Proclaiming May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas the emergency medical system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three is hereby set aside as Emergency Medical Services Week in Baldwin County, Alabama.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing us to serve Baldwin County. The third week of May every year is designated as Emergency Medical Services Week, and each week has a national theme, and this year's theme is where emergency care begins. We're fortunate to be able to go out into people's homes, or even into ditches at three AM, and provide lifesaving interventions to the people of Baldwin County, the visitors to Baldwin County who may need our services. During this week, we're gonna celebrate our providers, we have some of the most amazing clinicians in the, in the industry, right here in Baldwin County, on both the ground and airside. You're gonna see us a little more during that week, because we're going to do a little more outreach than we normally do. Normally, we do, you know, the typical pizza parties that everybody else does for their people, but this year, you may see us in front of your local Big Box store, teaching a hands-on CPR class. We've got several other things that we're doing, just to get out into the community to give them some tools to keep themselves safe, and maybe help with their families as well. That's pretty much all I can say.
Good morning, my name is Jeff Edwards, I'm the interim chief here for MedStar EMS. I'm from western North Carolina, a little, little county called Mitchell County, North Carolina. I've worked for the company, GMR Lifeguard, for a little over three years, and during the past two years, I've had the opportunity to travel throughout the southeast. For the past six months, I was in northern Alabama, and I've been here in your lovely county since March of this year, during the transition till we hired the new chief, Brad. But I just would like to say firsthand, thank you everyone for welcoming me when I came down here, it's a wonderful place, and I'll definitely make it a point to come back.
Do I hear a motion that we proclaim May the twenty-first through the twenty-seventh for Emergency Medical Services Week?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Mr. McKenzie. Any further discussion? Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, thank y'all again, another heartfelt thanks for what y'all do. It's another selfless job that, and a great asset that we have in this county, it's good to see it grow. Thank you for the leadership, being chief of MedStar now, our air care system provides the top-notch services needed, I see it all over the county, it's probably not a good thing, but it's also a lifesaving measure, especially during times of strokes and things like that, when, a long time ago, if we didn't have that service, the chances of survival were slim, but now, y'all have done an awesome job with the air care service, and if I'm not mistaken, you know, that's a benefit the employees here, the county receive on their insurance, and just, just the work that y'all do is amazing, and there's no way to thank you enough for what you do, what you have to see, and what you have to go through on a daily basis, and then go back home and then try to go to bed with all that on your mind, so just thanks again.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank y'all. I worked with y'all a lot, and always was glad that y'all got there before we did, so thank y'all for what y'all do. It made our lives a lot easier. And, and I wanted to reach out, this is Deidre's husband out there, so I just wanted to thank him too for being here, so.
Yes, thank you guys so much, and, and yes, Kenny, it's good, good to see you here, he won't ever talk. I'm sure he does sometimes, don't he, Deidre? No? Not really?
It's all right, he's like me, I don't have a lot to say.
I tell ya, my husband certainly talks a lot.
Women do.
Anyways, I can't tell you what it means to me, I have always, gosh, I would laugh and stop. He does talk a lot. Anyways, my husband, this is not funny.
Poor Gary.
But, I just learned, you told me that, the paramedic that made it to my brother's house that night's been promoted to captain, and congratulations to him. And you guys don't know what it's like when you get that phone call in the middle of the night, about twelve-thirty, and my brother almost died last year, and these guys, help of the good Lord, paramedics, the nine-one-one, all those people, but that phone call that came through from my nephew, he still live at home, and, and all he could say was, pray. It's bad. But in the background, I could hear you guys working. I mean, I could hear those guys talking, I could hear those machines going, and all that kind of stuff. And so for all you guys that you're, sometimes you may not never know what ends up happening, you know, later on or whatever, but I just, I just thank you. And I know I probably won't ever stop talking about it, because it's a testimony that I know my brother has every single, just about day of his life, about how God brought him through, and it was through you guys that he worked, and I thank you so much, and thank you for what you do every single day. I, I was out in Colorado about, I don't know, I was out there for an IRS conference about ten years ago, and we were riding, took a little tour of the mountains, and I started thinking, wow, what if you lived way up here, how long it would take to get paramedic to you, and I'm so glad I don't live a mile and a half from your home base in Somerville, and so I just thank you so much.
Thank y'all so very much for the service that y'all provide to the citizens of Baldwin County. It's a very needed service, especially in certain parts of the county, there's a lot of elderly people in the communities, Lee is one of them, that is really heavily populated with senior citizens, and they need y'all's service, and I know y'all provide it for them, and, but, you know, it's, it's a lifesaving service. So, thank y'all so very much for what y'all do, and that said, do I, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Now, as a habit, thank you very much. All right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Employees of the Quarter, Ms. Deidre Hannigan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, I'm very excited to be able to present our Employee of the Quarter certificates. We have three that we're recognizing today. The goal of our Employee of the Quarter program is to publicly recognize our outstanding employees, acknowledge their accomplishments and contributions to the County Commission as a whole. It also offers an opportunity for all employees to recognize their peers for an exceptional job performance, as well as offering the citizens an opportunity to recognize county employees who exhibit exceptional customer service. So we have a little bit of everything today, and I think it kind of ties in with our Older Americans Month and our EMS, so I think we're pretty excited. First, we have Ms. Betty Fitkin, that we will recognize, not for Older Americans Month, I promise. And we have Carrie to present her certificate.
Good morning.
It is an honor to be here today, recognizing one of the hardest-working employees I know. In the ten years that Betty Fitkin has been with the county, she has shown to have a true servant's heart, making sure those around her are well taken care of, and anyone who knows her knows this to be true. She gives her best every day, quietly and diligently taking care of the Central Annex Facility and those who come through its doors. Ms. Betty is quick to help our visitors to Central Annex, greeting those she meet, those she meets with a smile on her face. Working in the Commission office, it isn't often we hear positive from those who contact us, it's just the line of work we're in, but it always puts a smile on my face when folks come inside and compliment how beautiful and clean our facility is. And trust me, I hear it often. And it's thanks to those hard-working custodians that we have, they're basically the glue that holds us together, we can't do it without them. It has truly been an honor to work with Ms. Betty over the last ten years, and I'm so very proud of her, she's so deserving of this.
Thank you. Thank you for this, and I'm gonna truly miscarry a lot. And on.
We are too.
We will too.
Yeah.
All right.
So we gonna do?
Yes.
We're doing all of them at one time?
We'll do them all, one time. Yeah, we'll do them all.
We'll do them all with the end?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I would like to echo what Carrie had to say, Betty is one of the hardest-working employees that I've come across in my tenure here at the county. Her nomination explained her as pleasant and joyful and very quick to help, and that is absolutely the truth. So we'll give her a round of applause. Our second recipient today is Michael Curry with the Parks Department, and I would like to read why he was nominated. He was nominated by someone from the Robertsdale Fire Department.
Wow. Good deal. That's nice.
He existed with a car accident, and he was helping check on patients, and he was directing traffic before the first responders arrived. So let's recognize Michael Curry.
Come on, Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madison.
Michael has been here for a little over eleven years with his tenure with the county. He started as a landscape detective one, and last year, in August, he got promoted to crew leader. Crew leader positions, he has many hats that he takes care of every day, does a lot of duties, and we're very proud to have him in the Parks Department.
I'd just like to say, thanks to each and everyone for this nomination, it's truly appreciated, and I'd just like to know, whenever I'm given a task, I do my best to do the best I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And last but certainly not least, we have Susan Allen with the Probate Office. She is not here today, she is on her honeymoon. But she did ask that we go ahead and recognize her at this meeting, and so, I did want to read what her nomination had to say. It was from an older citizen, and he came in to renew out-of-county tags, or to get new tags. And they had a bumpy road during the transaction, and it was a very long email, I believe that the Commissioners received it as well. But he was very complimentary of her, very patient, even with the problems that arose during their transaction, very polite and very professional. And so, we'll recognize Ms. Susan Allen.
Let's get the group picture.
Is it time for the picture?
Okay, Commissioners, y'all wanna say anything?
I'll start.
Yeah, you start this time.
Absolutely. I just want to say that Ms. Betty works at the Central Annex building, as we said earlier, and Carrie Green and Tiffany Givens will be, Carrie's leaving us in June, which is next month. Wow. She's moving to Birmingham. And I know Betty, you're gonna miss her, and I hope you're gonna love Tiffany. We do already. And I just want to say that what you guys have to put up with sometimes from public is amazing, and how you handle it with grace, and you keep that place clean. That's an old building, too. I know it's in good shape, but you guys do a great job. Sometimes the plumbing don't cooperate, sometimes the bathrooms are interesting, and I have walked in there sometimes, and woo, some of the things that go on in the whole bathroom, and to know that you guys are always right there to take care of that, you know? It's interesting what can happen in a public restroom, but you guys keep that place always. I have never went in there one time when you guys haven't, either I'm in the middle of cleaning it, or it's clean. You do the best with everything. So, Ms. Betty, my hat's off to you. I've done that line of work, not as a full-time person, but I used to assist my mom. She was a custodian, and I used to assist her in cleaning some public facilities. And it's interesting, you almost think sometimes that same person comes in there every day and leaves you something interesting. But I thank you so much. It is definitely one of those types of jobs that is needed, it's necessary, and I do feel like that it takes a calling to do that. And you're always so pleasant, and I appreciate you so much. And where's Big Mike? Where's he at?
He went back to work.
He's dedicated.
He's one of the first, he's one of the first ones that I actually remember. Hey, ladies backing out, out there in that little, that truck he drives. When I see him down at Central Annex, and they're down there working and keeping the grounds clean, I recently watched the video that you guys have on our, I was trying to look for something else and come across that, and it amazes me how much, how many areas that you guys take care of. And it's a long video, I didn't watch the whole thing, because it got about nine minutes long or something like that. Maybe I'll go back and see the rest of it. But I just, he is always, he drove the, I think he volunteers a lot when y'all do off things that you don't necessarily have to do. He drove the truck for the float in the, celebrating the 200 birthday of Alabama back in 2019, right after, you know, we got elected. And he's just always so pleasant. And what he said a while ago, from the way I was brought up, when somebody says that, that means they were raised right. He said, "When I get a task to do, I'll do it." Now, I don't know if that's southern talk, being raised right, but I know what it means, and I think a lot of you that are listening to me knows what that means. And so, when he said that, I knew that meant he was raised right, and I appreciate, and I'm sure his mama would be proud of him. Thank you.
Ms. Betty, thank you for what you do. You take care of the Central Annex, and it looks fabulous. It's, and all their employees do, so thank you for what you do. And congratulations for getting the Employee of the Quarter. So, thank you. To Michael, thank you for what he did, and he's not here, but thank you for what he has done, helping a good Samaritan, being a good Samaritan, getting out and trying to help somebody. So, thank him for that when y'all see him. For the probate lady, I forgot her name, but I think it was Susan, thank you for what she does. That's, it's an honor to get good things and not bad things all the time as a Commissioner, because we always get the negative stuff. But it's good to be able to praise these people for what they do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks to all three of y'all for receiving the Employee of the Quarter awards. A former Commissioner that sat up here with me used to say, you know, it's great to be a small part of such a large organization that we have here. And the four of us do some things, but we don't do near as much as our staff does. And without our staff, the organization does not run. And we've always said, it starts even with the custodians, with our parks, everybody involved with this organization keeps it the way it is and makes Baldwin County a great place to work and live. And y'all are the ones that gets in the weeds and does all the things to make this a special place, make our facilities nice, and make sure that when citizens walk into a building, you know, it's in great condition, clean, and the grass is well-kept, and probates well-run, whatever. Every, you know, there's gonna be people that complain about experiences they have, but I've lived here my whole life, and I've never had a bad experience in any of our departments, even before I was a Commissioner. So, everything that y'all do to make this organization run is greatly appreciated by the four of us sitting up here. So, thank you so much for what you do for us. I make, we don't have to make a motion on that, so.
Oh, thank y'all. Ms. Betty, thank you so very much. You know, it's, y'all, y'all do a great job. You know, a lot of times, you know, a lot of things go unnoticed, but, you know, y'all take care of the county's business. And Michael, you know, he's a dedicated employee also as well. He goes way above and beyond a lot of things. You know, a lot of people would have just, when the accident might have just drove by, but Michael stopped and helped. You know, this could be committed. And Ms. Allen, you know, I'm glad she's on, congratulate her on her wedding, and I hope she has a good honeymoon. And she, you know, and it is, you know, and I say this all the time, Baldwin County has the best employees you'd ever want to see. They're all dedicated, they do a great job. You know, a lot of times, they get criticized for what they do. But, you know, and they continue on and make this county a whole lot better. So, thank each and every one of y'all, and Ms. Betty. Michael and Ms. Allen, thank y'all very, very, very much for your dedication to the county.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot, I didn't mean to, it was unintentional, but I got carried away there, I forgot to mention Susan, and I hope she's having a fantastic honeymoon. And I did get copied on that email from that citizen that complimented her, and that is, when you get those emails, that is what you like to see. Get enough emails of things, you're like, oh, Lord, how are we gonna, gotta figure out how to take care of this one, you know, and do it, you know? But that is so great. And those, those ladies that work in probate, they're on the front line, you know? So many times, they're having to deal with, that's the big customer relation part of this county, I feel like. And so, when we get those compliments on that, I know they work for the probate judge, but it's so fantastic to hear those compliments, and so, I hope she's having a great time right now.
Okay. Next is the public hearings. I think we have two public hearings, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First up is case number Z23-1, Baird Property Resoning. Mr. Matthew Brown.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I do want to give a shout-out to our Planning Technicians, Fabio Waters and Paula Bonner. These were actually the first two rezoning cases they did in front of the Planning Commission, and one of these days, we'll have them up here presenting these to y'all as well. I did want to say real quickly before I start this presentation, we hit a new threshold that we've never hit in planning and zoning this past week. We ran out of signs, signposts, because of the number of cases we have floating around in the county right now. So, we had to borrow some from highways, so we appreciate Highway helping us out with some of that material. So, okay, these are both very simple cases, so we're gonna move through them very quickly, and we can pause and ask questions as we go. So, this is Z23-01, Baird Property. This is located kind of north of Lillian, north of Alberta, in Planning District 22. It's currently zoned RSF1. We'd have to look back on the detailed history, but I think this is a result of one of the automatic rezonings that you could do to RSF1 that existed in years past, but you can see it's surrounded by green RA. It's 21 acres. In this case, the citizen is requesting to change it back to RA, because they want to use it for equine rehabilitation facility, so for horses, so a great agricultural use there. You can see the surrounding properties, aerial photography. I'm gonna just flip through these images quickly, but you can see a really general rule character for that property. This is RSF1 zoning allowances, the RA allowances, so of course, agricultural uses, including things with horses work great in RA. We believe all factors support a rezoning in this situation, so I'm not gonna dwell on those. These are in the staff report, in case you want to read those in detail. We didn't get any comments back on this, so staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Okay, Commissioners, y'all have any questions of Matthew?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. I call this public hearing to order for case number Z23-1, the Baird Property Resoning. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak, or do we have anybody signed up? Anybody like to speak on behalf of this or oppose? Right. Hearing done. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve case number Z23/1, the Baird Property Resoning.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie, to approve case number Z23-1, the Baird Property Resoning. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we have Z23-04, Turner Property. Again, I thank Paula Bonner for her work on this. This is in the Josephine area. It's kind of a unique property, so it's gonna look a little odd on the screen. It's 17.08 acres total, and you'll notice that it's zone RMF6, which is for apartments, basically, or townhomes. I believe it came in with this zoning when this district was zoned years ago, and it's owned by someone who just uses it for single-family residential uses. It's kind of like their family compound. And so, we've worked with them to switch it back to an RSFE-type zoning, which is just more appropriate for the surrounding area. And so, they're requesting to go to RSFE to develop the property for continued residential use for their family. Again, you can see the surrounding area that it really supports a single-family residential estate type lots, which are like two-acre lots or greater. There is one lot that will remain RMF6, just because it's already at that minimum lot size, and there was no way to change that. Surrounding properties here with these images, again, requirements of RMF6, that's a very intense use, going to RA, and there is an RSF2 that they're changing as well, going to RSFE for those estate lots. This, as soon as this rezoning's done, they'll be doing a common line move to change some of the minimum lot sizes to meet the requirements, but they have to get, finish this rezoning to complete this process. Again, we believe all factors here support this rezoning. I won't dwell on these slides, they're all in the staff report. The staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission recommended approval as well.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions of Matthew?
No, sir.
If not, then I call this public hearing to order for case number Z23-4, Turner Property Resoning. Is anyone who'd like to speak for or against this property rezoning? Hearing done. Hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this rezoning request.
I got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood to approve case number Z23-4, the Turner Property Resoning.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that this is a big-time correction. How in the world that happened is amazing to me, because having that type of a zoning out in the unincorporated area, even though it might be a zoned area, that just blows the compatibility issue out the, whatever, out of the water. But this is great that this is being rectified, in my opinion. So, absolutely, I'm not opposed of apartments and all, they just don't belong in certain places, and this is just good.
All right, any other things? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Thank you, Matthew.
Next, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, items FA1 and FA2 have been pulled. Now, Environmental Management, item FL1, Solid Waste Disposal Authority, request for an Attorney General's opinion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item FA1 to request an Attorney General's opinion.
All right, I got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number FL1, requesting Attorney General's opinion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, item FL2, which is application for formation of a solid waste disposal authority.
Commissioners?
Okay, we need to name all the, is that a separate one, or is that first?
That's part of the resolution, ain't it?
It's part of the resolution. It should be in your packet now with the names in the resolution. So, I think, you know, if you wanted to state the names in the minutes and then just...
My computer has signed off, but I think I know who they are.
Yes, I know.
I'll make the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong on anything. I'll make a motion that we approve item FL2, the application for formation of the solid waste disposal authority, and that we appoint the initial Board of Directors as named Rhonda Butler, Paige Phelps, Jennifer Fauch, Jason Paget, and B. Commissioner Ball, who serves as the current, the economic development industrial chairperson. And that position will rotate each year. I get that right? All right, didn't even have any notes.
All right, I've got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood to approve the application for formulation, seconded by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is item FR1, which is termination of Baldwin County's program membership in the Pensacola and Perdido Bay Exterior Program.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item FR1, noted that the staff recommends that we have, has an attached correspondence revised to include the language to waive the 60-day written notice of termination.
I'll second that.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood, to approve item number FR1 with the changes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next. Next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is section G, item GA one, which is allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for Baldwin County, uh, commission staff administrative costs.
I'll make a recommendation, we approve item GA one.
All right, got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number GA one.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ball. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Next is item GA two, which is allocation of American Rescue Act revenue replacement funds to Baldwin County Eastern Shore Healthcare Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve GA two.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number GA two. Um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Next item is item GA three, competitive bid, WG twenty-three dash seventeen, which is outfit the Magnolia Material Recovery Facility for the Baldwin County Commission.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Underwood to approve item number GA three. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next.
Next is item GA four, which is resolution twenty-three dash one-ten, allocation of American Rescue Act plan, uh, revenue replacement funds for the purchase of a two R, two fifty dash eighty-four, two by fifty horsepower, two ram baler for the recycle facility.
So move, I'll make that motion.
Okay, made a motion by Commissioner Underwood.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve item number GA four. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next.
Next item is item HA one, East, uh, East Central Baldwin Water Sewer, uh, and Fire Protection Authority Board Appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation from ECBC for their board appointment.
Second.
All right. Okay, uh, got a motion made by Commissioner, uh, Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball, uh, for item number HA one. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next.
How do you want to handle this?
Uh, this is the, um, I mean, there's... Contract, um, is it, yesterday in our workshop, we went through all of the contracts for our, uh, contract employees and we've come up with a, um, a salary form, um, and I think every one of them hopefully are signing their contracts. So, um, y'all just, just make a motion that we, uh, approve all the contracts or...
I don't think so.
Yes, sir, I make, I make a motion that we approved, um, all contracts as outlined yesterday, uh, with any changes, um, and that's it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve the contracts for the contract employees, uh, uh, as stated in their, each and every one of their contracts.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh, when we approve these, um, you know, there's two that are not contracts right now. We're, we're also appointing the interim county engineer.
Yes.
And the assistant, uh, engineer.
That's correct.
And I just wanted to note that for the record because, uh, contracts plus those two.
They remain merit employees.
Okay. They're named, yes, okay. All right. All right. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, Matt, you have something else to say?
Yeah, on the discussion, I just wanted to make sure that nothing was changed. I mean, Joey still stays on the payroll until the twelfth, correct?
Yes, it is. He still, he will be, uh, getting his stuff together and helping transition, uh, with Frank.
Okay, good deal.
You know, as, I think it's a seven-day period is what exactly what his, the workdays are, so. Okay. All right. Next.
Next item, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is item HA three, agreement for project number zero-two-one-zero-two-two-one-dash-HW-two-one-one-zero-two-thousand, County Road twenty-five, uh, sixty-five, Munderwood Road to County Road twenty-eight, dirt road paving project, tracks number six, seven, eight, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve item HA three, the agreement for this project that's so noted by, um, Mr. Saint.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve item number HA three. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next, uh, we have, uh, commission request.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll start with somebody else.
All right. I, I, you gonna do it? Go ahead.
Okay, Commissioners, um, um, I bring before y'all a resolution number twenty-two-three dash one-one-seven, a resolution of the Baldwin County Commission opposing any action by the Alabama legislation that will create a fifth county commission position, whereas local legislation has been proposed, which will create a fifth commissioner position to serve as chairman of the Baldwin County Commission and whereas the Baldwin County Commission unanimously oppose, uh, unanimously opposes the creation of the fifth commissioner position to serve as chairman of the Baldwin County Commission and whereas by this resolution the Baldwin County Commission expresses its opposition to the Alabama Legislature and the Baldwin County, uh, legislation delegation. Now therefore it be resolved by the Baldwin County Commission in a regular meeting assembled by the commission, it unanimously opposes the proposed local legislation, which will create a fifth commissioner position to serve as chairman of the Baldwin County Commission. The Baldwin County Commission hereby urges all members of the Alabama Legislature and particularly the Baldwin County Legislation Delegation to oppose any efforts to pass this legislation. All right, Commissioners, um, you heard the resolution, do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
And second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, um, for people that don't understand, to let them know that we're unified in this effort, um, to, uh, terminate this progress that's trying to be made to create a fifth commissioner for this county commission. Um, I think we're more unified than ever. We're sending a message to the state that we're doing things just fine with the four of us and I greatly appreciate the support of the three of y'all in the effort to, um, kill this bill.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just want to also say that I am definitely not in favor of adding more politicians to government, especially ones that will be paid a high salary at a full-time position. And as Commissioner Ball stated, we are working together fine. Uh, the, I know there's sometimes a perceived notion that how does an even number work? Well, you know what? It takes three to pass in a five-member commission as well. And so whenever you have a two-two vote, that's just simply a failed motion and there is not a need to add more politicians to government. Thank you.
Mr. McKenzie?
I've been here since August, so right now we're working fine.
All right, um, I'd just like to say that, you know, I've been here for quite a few years, um, and what they're trying to do is change the constitution of Baldwin County, which was adopted in, uh, nineteen thirty-one is what the, what it, what the, uh, legislation was when it was created. There was a federal judge several years ago that tried to change that setting. He appointed seven commissioners. There was a lawsuit filed. The lawsuit was, uh, the, made the judge go back and overturn his appointments to that and report in the county was to go back to what the nineteen thirty-one constitution said for Baldwin County as an organization. It has worked since nineteen thirty-one. I know it's, that seemed like a long time ago, but we've made a lot of improvements through those years to bring Baldwin County to where it's at today. Baldwin County is probably one of the, well, it is one of the fastest-growing counties. Uh, we, sometimes our population increases three, four, five-fold because of the tourism that we have. So we're not just dealing with occasional, you know, what our, our population is, we're dealing with a lot of other people that come here. So, you know, uh, everything's working right. Yes, sometimes we don't agree on some things, but you know what? Lot of times when a motion fails and you get a two-two, that will come back a later date and there will be improvements made to that, uh, thing and it will pass. So, uh, with that being said, um, yeah, I think we got the motion by, by, uh, so, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ron, senior staff report.
I've just got a quick statement. Uh, I want to thank this commission and previous commissioners, commissions for allowing me to serve the citizens of Baldwin County for seventeen years. I appreciate, uh, all of the staff that I've had the honor and privilege to work with through all of those years and, uh, the tenth will be my last day and ended off to a very capable Roger and very, very capable Beth, who I hired many years ago and left and came back, uh, and I certainly appreciate, uh, everyone. All the, I'm honored and privileged to, I've worked with some very, very remarkable people through the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, I'm going to start with the comment first, if y'all don't mind on this one. Ron, thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart. Me and you have been good friends, coworkers for many, many years. Um, you've been here just about as long as I have with, uh, and, you know, we have accomplished so much in this county. It's unbelievable. And that's to do to the leadership of our staff, because if we hadn't had good staff, we wouldn't be where we're at today, because they make this stuff happen, folks. They make it happen. And I just want to, you know, wish you the very, very best. I know you're going on to, um, you're not just going home and saying the heck, but you're going, you're going to another job, basically doing the same thing you're doing here.
Mr. Brown?
And, um, you're going to do a fantastic job with them. You know, it was, it's our loss and Escambia County's, uh, gain, so, uh, I wish you the very best in your endeavor and thank you so very much and I want to... All right, Commissioners, anybody else have something?
Thanks, uh, Ron, for carrying me in when you did, when, uh, when I first got here. There's three, three brand-new commissioners, um, when we first took office in two thousand eighteen and you were dealing with two, three totally different individuals at the time and, uh, you made it work for us. You kept telling me war and peace. I'll always remember that. There's a, there's a, there's a dividing line that you have to do when you get into this business and you just sometimes just sit down and, uh, calm down and, um, drinking from all the fire hoses that we have to drink through, uh, out of when you, when we first come in. You, you made the transition seamless. You, you, you were always willing to help us out and I appreciate everything that you've done, the guidance, the wisdom, uh, encouragement, uh, everything that Commissioner Gruber said. I appreciate, um, everything. You'll be missed and, uh, wish you, uh, best of luck in your future endeavors and you're just right down the road. We want to go grab some lunch or something, so good luck, Ron.
Ron, just thank you. Since I've been here since August, um, you've been a, a, a leader that I needed to, to learn this job and it's tough. And you've always told me how to vote and as, you know, your, you, your head, your heart, and your gut, and I appreciate that. You've been doing a lot and, and, and I couldn't do this, you know, without you, with your help, so I, I'm going to miss you, uh, but you've got to do what you've got to do for you and your family and, uh, like, like Commissioner Ball said, you, you're not far, so, and you don't live far from me either, so, uh, so we can go have lunch. So thank you again, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Um, I remember when we all came in and you were like, well, I've been waiting on this day. I don't know if you were really waiting on it or not, but, um, I appreciate everything you've done for me and I remember you, um, I remember asking you, I said, help me with a definition of what a county commission area is, and, and you gave me a very good, uh, Ron viewpoint, which is spot-on really, and I saved it, it's in my notes on this iPhone. Something has iPhone, I'm going to have it, but it's in there. I even paid extra money to keep the cloud up, you know, or keep all that stuff I keep in there. But, uh, you've helped me so much. I know there's times when we'd be like, I don't understand this, and you just look at me like, you know, like what you don't get, you know, and, and then we've had so many great conversations and I'll never forget the, um, things we had to do to, to make this county the way it is, when we had to go to, to do the bond rating and I'll never forget that trip to New York, um, when we had to go. It was a, it was a fly-in and fly-out trip, but, uh, that was, it was, we had to go up there to get a bond rating for the, the money we were borrowing from the jail. There's just some things that you're, you're never, you ain't going to ever forget that either, are you? Yes, I, I, um, it was an eventful trip. Nothing bad happened, but it was, it was fun, but, uh, there's just so many great things that they've done, accomplished, and I know you're going to take a lot of this stuff and you're going to help Escambia County move into the things that they may not have been able to have opportunities to do, uh, based on their size and limitations that they have and, and that you've been able to be at the helm of this great organization and, and, um, I, um, I'll say this, and I've told this to you, to your face, there's not one person has ever said they didn't want to work for you. And I, I, I say that is huge, because they don't say that about everybody, but nobody's ever said they didn't want to work for Ron, and I think that means a lot. And if we always all thought the same, what's that old saying? Who, who coined that patent or somebody, then somebody's not thinking. But, um, you do a good job. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing. Ron, I just want to thank you because I think, um, you know, you, you worked really hard for me and Commissioner Underwood to, to both be a part of Plan twenty-twenty-four and, um, those efforts are not, um, unthought of. I, I really do gratefully appreciate the help of that, uh, process because we are learning a, a lot from that program and, uh, without your and staff's efforts, um, you know, we, we, we wouldn't probably be sitting there right now, so thank you for, uh, what you did in helping us get to that. Mr. Chairman, also, um, I've received word that, um, Sheriff, Mr. Hossamak would like to make a presentation to Ron.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I know this comes as a surprise, but I was able to step across the street and draw a warrant for Ron. We're not going, we're not going to let him leave the county. Mr. Chairman, thank you once again for allowing me to do this. I have a special presentation I would like to make for Ron. We actually, uh, I became sheriff and, and Ron became, went to budget, uh, right around the same year, uh, when, um, back when he started with the county. You know, it's hard to believe, but Ron and I have worked in those years with over a half-billion dollars in budget, and that was just for the sheriff's office. And he has taught me so much about figures and about working in the county government system and working with budgets and also, um, he's helped us. Uh, he was a mentor to our budget director, Connie Dudgeon, who retired last year, and we've just always worked together. And, you know, it certainly, I think Commissioner Underwood said it, that, you know, it's our loss, but it's Escambia County's gain. And, uh, we'll, we'll miss him, but he's going to be right there with us. So Ron, on behalf of the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office, I now bestow on you the honor of honorary deputy sheriff.
All right.
Don't flash that to try to get out of trouble. That'll get you in more trouble.
You might need it going to Bruneville.
I mean, from the bottom of my heart, uh, it was a tough decision to make the move. Sometimes we all need to make a change. Uh, I think the change is going to be good for me, uh, and... I think the change is gonna be good for me, and, and the change is gonna be good for the county as well. You know, sometimes you gotta look at things from a different point of view. I'm certainly looking forward to helping the Scamby County out. I've been in contact with them over various, various things. They're gonna teach me stuff, I'm gonna teach them stuff. It's, life should be a learning process.
It is.
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
While we're on the same subject, I'd also like to thank Joey Nunley for his years of service with the Ballin County Commission. He is also retiring and moving on to another venture in his life, and Joey has done a fantastic job as a county engineer. There's a lot of projects out there that he was very instrumental in getting started. So, you know, I go back, you know, and when, when he first became county engineer, and you know, it was, there was so much we had to do, and you know, and his relationship with the state, the federal, the local folks has brought the county a whole lot further than you would ever remember. So, I just want to thank Joey for all he's done as well. Okay, all right. Okay. County attorneys report?
Ooh, that's good.
Public comment. Anyone like to speak on any, on any, any issues? All right. Hearing none. Press questions? Any press questions? Hearing none. Commission comments. Commissioner Ball.
Man, you're killing me today, starting me everything.
You want me to start? I'll tell you, I'll start.
I, I got this, I got this. Yeah, I mean, what a, what a, what a great meeting today. I mean, these are the kind of meetings that make the, some of the bad days that we have go away, the unity that we're having here with the four of us and the, the staff. Golly, I can't imagine what it took to put this agenda together, ladies up, sitting up there not doing anything, but the, 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 what it took to put this agenda, I don't even know how many pages it wound up, how many pages it wound up with, with the contracts and everything? Probably close to a thousand, so, you know, we got this all digitally now, so we're not killing all those trees, and, but the staff here is just, it's amazing staff to work with, to, to be a part of this organization, something special. I just, you know, I just wanted to mention a difficult thing that, a passing that happened here recently. My next-door neighbor, who was my mail lady for 30 years, Gloria Mixon, has passed away, and there's been several influential people here in the Baimanet area that, that's passed away here recently, but Ms. Glory was a, definitely a District One person, as she delivered mail here for 30 years for the postal service, and she was my next-door neighbor and unexpectedly passed away, so I just wanted to send my sincere thoughts and prayers to, to her family as well. She's one of our engineers that we work with, with Stuart and Adams, Todd Stewart's mother-in-law, so it's, it's been a, a difficult time for those families right now, so my heartfelt prayers for them. Again, what a great meeting today, doing the presentations really set my tone for the day, you know, I don't know how we can't be happy after, after all that, and I think after this is over with, we got some snacks in the back from Ron, and Ron, just again, thank you for everything. Joey, if you're watching in Greece, which I don't know if you are or not, but if you are, because I think you would have to be really bored to be doing that, on that vacation, but understand that, I appreciate everything that you've done for, for me in the past four and a half years that I've been here, learned a lot from our highway engineer, one of the most brilliant minds I've ever seen, and I really do appreciate the, the guidance he has given us, and learning just a small part of, of what goes into the, the road system and engineering part of this county is way more than you think, but Joey and his staff is always quick on the spot to, if we pick up the phone and call and say that we've got a, a citizen that's got a problem with something, we pass that directly to his office, and he gets right on it and, and responds back to us that it's been, the work has been completed, and it's, it's just a citizen's service that's greatly appreciated amongst everybody here. Some things don't get done as fast as people want, but it eventually will get done, so I just wanted to thank Joey for his years of service as well, and thank the four, I say the four of y'all, thank the three of y'all again, and, and for, for being my partners up here. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, a good road ahead for us. I look forward to many great times together as a unified front, and I appreciate the efforts that we've taken here today.
I'd just like to say, you know, I'm short and sweet, I don't talk a lot, but I'd just like to say thank yous to the staff, I mean, because like Commissioner Ball said, when we, when I looked at the agenda again last night, and we went over the contracts, and y'all had all, everything put together, my hat, my hand, hands off to, our hats off to y'all, because that was awesome, for y'all to stay late and do everything. Ron, thank you. Like I said earlier, you, you were a good leader, and I'm gonna miss that, you helped me a lot, and I'm still learning. Joey, like Commissioner Ball, if you're listening, thank you, he's gonna be really missed. He's got a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience, a lot of contacts, anytime I needed to contact him, he would contact this person and find out, and he's gonna be really missed, but he's got to do what he's got to do for his family. And for the Commissioners, thank y'all. Thank you. And, but anyway, thank y'all very much.
I tell you, I listened to an audiobook on my way up to Baimanet, it's about a 30-minute, 40-minute drive, depending on traffic, and there was a, the book, just, I just started the book on audio, and the, the author was talking about how she writes a lot of historical, about historical characters, and she was saying in there, when she was in, a professor in, in school, she was like, "How, what is, who is gonna get us back to what we really do here in America and make America good?" And this is, this is way before Donald Trump came to the picture, so this is an older book, and she said, "You know, who is that person gonna be? Who's gonna get us there? It's all of us." That's what she said. "It's not just one elected leader, it's not just one person or whatever." She said, "It's all of us that are needed to, to make our country and our state and our county and our cities what we perceive is greatness." With that said, now y'all know I'm a nerd that listens to audiobooks from history, but somebody in this room told me about it, and I won't call them out, but thank you, Ron, again. I always say, "I like you, Ron." I do, and I appreciate everything you've ever done for me. And Joey, if you're listening, thank you, Joey, you've taught me so many things about engineering. You complimented me and said that I do listen to you, because when you tell me something and I repeat it, I'll say, "Did I get it right?" You'd always say, "Yeah." But I thank you so much, and I do wish you the best. You've done a lot for Ballin County, you've done a lot for me, and I appreciate that. And one thing I want to say about, I feel like we're in a position now where we can move forward with a great, we've come together like never before, and this is one thing that I know Joey would say to me, he says, "You know what you always would tell me?" And I said, "Yep." He said, "You would tell me that the reason our organization, even though it might be perceived as not the best organizational chart, you would say it works because of the great people we have here. We have these great people that make it work, and, and when you don't have great people, even a best organizational chart won't work. So whether you got a bad organizational chart, good organizational chart, it takes great people to make it work, and we have that here, and we thank you." And for those who are moving on, I know Joey's moving on to something else, always, I know I am an Alabama fan, I ain't gonna deny that, but when Nick Saban loses some of his assistants, he's always like, "I hope they're moving on to something, you know, better," and not just, and, and I think that's what Joey's doing. So, thank you guys so much, and I thank my colleagues. Like I said earlier, I, I, we're all different, as you can see, but we get along incredibly well, considering all of our uniqueness, and we all bring different skillsets to the commission, and I think that it is a calling, and if you lose your calling, you don't need to be here, whether you're an employee, or whether you're a commissioner, or, or anybody else. And so I don't think anybody that's sitting up here with me has any personal agendas in place, I don't think they're in it for themselves, I think that they really, truly love where they live and want to make and keep Ballin County the great place to live that it is. Thank you.
You know, I want to thank the staff for, first of all, for getting this agenda. I mean, it's, it's a pretty big agenda that today, with all the contracts that, that we had with our employees, and I want to congratulate them for, you know, staying with us and agreeing to their contract, and, you know, we got a lot to do, and, you know, as a team, we're gonna make everything work. We have to, you know, Ballin County does not stand still for nothing. So, we just got to keep moving and doing what we think is the best thing for, for the citizens of Ballin County. They're the ones that put us in office, and we need to do what they're asking and kind of recommending. Again, Ron, Joey, thank y'all so much from the bottom of my heart again, you know, y'all mean a lot to me, and I'm gonna miss y'all very, very much. You know, it's, it's the camaraderie that we build within our organization. This is like, this is like, it's like a family, if you stop to think about it. We spend probably more time with our employees and that than we do with our actual family members, you know, you know, most of the time, and so, you know, this is one great, big, happy family. So, again, thank you all so very much, and hope everyone sticks around for Ron's little get-together. With that being said, do I hear a motion that we adjourn? I got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ball to adjourn. We adjourn at 10:24. Thank you all very much. She's got us.